All right, it is six o'clock. We will call this meeting to your order. And please rise when you believe it's.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone? Start off with recognition.
All right, so I don't typically recognize people who are believing in this district, but I wanted to recognize two members of, I guess, the central office staff, leadership team, who are departing North Portfield. First is Mr. Justin Hacketson, who has been our IT director for the past five, a little over five years. He started as truly a tech in his first couple of years and then transitioned to the role of director when Mr. Howard left the district and retired. Justin has moved or is moving to Boston and the community of North Portfield is just not manageable. So Justin has done a great job. He's been the longest-serving member of the LT since I've been here. I'd say that he's over five years now in the district. So I just want to thank him for all his efforts. He's done a lot of great work for us the last several years, and we missed. We did, I can't make an announcement just yet, but we did offer and the person accepted today that, for that exact role. So I will make an announcement to the committee the latest by next meeting, but probably sooner than that. And second, I want to recognize another valuable member of our team who's leading. This is more professionally based, but Cindy Schofield has been with us for nearly two years and has done a tremendous job in the role of business manager or, we don't call it that here. We call it human resources assistant slash business assistant, something along those lines. But she has technically served as our business manager for the past couple of years. She's done a great job and she's moving on to a new role in another district. So we're very happy for her. And an update on that process, we have a finalist coming in tomorrow. And that's hopefully we have a good sense of where we're at after tomorrow afternoon. But I want to thank both of them, both Cindy and Justin, for their tremendous efforts for our district and for our students, our families, they were missed, but we are hopeful that we find qualified applicants that fill in roles.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Justin, if he's not here.
Anyone else? Moving on, approval of minutes? Any? First of all, motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the sub-ten sixteen minutes? Second?
Any comments on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Call of participation? Communications? I'll start off. I received a formal notice from the president of the North Portfield Teachers Association. It is September thirtieth. Dear Ms. McGarryo, and writing and forwarding that per Article twenty-five of our collective bargain, bargaining agreement, North Portfield Teachers Association wishes to modify the contract, which expires on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Is our hope that we can negotiate a fair and equitable settlement in a timely fashion. Sincerely, Damian Suret, President of the MBTA Incorporated. And that was received first day of this month. So here, did you go ahead?
I forwarded an email from Bill King to everybody. He reached out to give us some information about a program.
Take the fear out of finance one?
Yeah, the whole finance. Oh, here it is. Okay. So it's a website with a free digital workbook. And so he shared that and I shared it with the rest of the school committee. You should probably forward that out, see if anyone's interested.
The, the whole part says debt budgeting taxes. These words may give many people a scare. This is October, take the fear out of finance with cash course, a financial literacy series, third grade, first sixth grade and up. Help your middle and high schoolers understand the basics of financial literacy with a free downloadable workbook. Complete with ten educated creative lesson plans and worksheets with corresponding videos.
So I'll forward that to John DiOrio.
It looks like they cover topics such as what is an economy, savings, good versus bad credit, and what is a budget? And I think those are all great things for kids to learn. First one, so I think it's worth investigating.
Can you share that with me as well?
Oh, yeah.
Any other communications? Great, moving on to the student representative report.
Past information, class elections on September seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth. We hosted class elections for the sixth and seventh and ninth grade students, giving, or giving students opportunities to hold class office positions. Homecoming. On Saturday, September twenty-eighth, we held our annual homecoming dance. The dance was from six to nine. The dance went pretty well. Halloween, upcoming information, Halloween room decorating. Halloween room decorating will be taking place this week. Grades will be decorating their advisors' classroom and impartial teachers will be judging on Friday, the twenty-fifth. The results will be announced on Monday, on the following Monday. Pumpkin decorating contest. Each grade may carve or decorate a pumpkin with any theme for bonus points on their room door or window, as well as spirit points. Halloween dance. The Halloween dance is on Friday, October twenty-fifth, from six to eight. This dance is for sixth through twelfth graders. And students are encouraged to wear their school appropriate Halloween costumes. Giving turkey. Our annual giving turkey event is coming up. It will be held all throughout November and is used to collect donations for toys to tots. Students are encouraged to take a feather from the turkey and buy whatever item is written on that feather. At the end, the grade with the most items donated will receive spirit week points. Conferences and field trips. Officer shop is on Saturday, October twenty-sixth at Worcester Tech. Fall conference is Thursday, is Thursday in November, Blackstone Valley Tech, from two-thirty to eight-thirty. Non-minute information, social media. We invite all community members to follow our social media accounts to keep up with all NBHS student council activities. Our accounts are Instagram at NBSTUCO and Facebook at NBSTUCO. Student council meetings. All meetings are open to the school and community. Meetings are typically every other Monday in the high school kiva from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Please feel free to join us if you have anything you would like to discuss or would just like to see how things are going. Thank you.
School committee reports? Well, we had, just had a set of committee meetings for policy. Set of committee, where we discussed updates on the Title IX portion of the, I guess, have fallen to the student handbook and school policies.
District policy manual.
And those are federal level mandates for changes in language, verbiage and regulation as far as term law protections and what we're under discussion with you. Anything you want to say on that?
No, I think, you know, we, it's a good conversation and I think the questions that you had or you raised will, will have answers in the near future. As you mentioned, they're federally mandated, so there's not a lot of room for creative language. We have to adopt it and make our own for North Portfield. Additionally, we're updating some of our language and the building policy, which there were some language changes in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one that we need to adopt. So we discussed that as well. So those are the two major policy proposals that we discussed this evening. And we should have, I think, some versions to vote on potential at the next meeting.
Any other set committees meetings or no? I don't think there were. Financial reports?
So if it's asked about your report, your review, put it inside the warrants. And as always, we are here to entertain questions.
Any questions or comments on the financial report?
I have no questions.
No. All right, I'm going to have to read that out. All right, superintendent's report.
All right, so I did send an email out to staff a few weeks ago, but just to welcome Eric Heavy, who was our new supervisor, somebody who may know who Eric is. He's a time resident, an active member of the fire department. Eric has a long history, nearly fifteen years in facility or facilities leadership, working in various districts across the state. So very excited to have Eric on board, very lucky to have Eric on board. And he officially started, what do you think of?
Fifteenth.
Yep, fifteenth. So welcome to Eric. So if you see Eric walking around, that's why, he's now an employee of the district. And a second update, and I know that the village principals put a lot of updates in their reports, but as I mentioned last month, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Emery, myself, Mr. DiOrio, part of the UDL, UDL for Design Coaching Professional Development by Novak Education. We had our second session about a week ago, and this was the focus on building effective educator-coach partnerships. So one of the things that we wanted to really highlight or really work on is that when Novak comes in, and we have three PD officers with them this year, when they facilitate their instruction around UDL with our staff, building leadership, myself and Mr. Emery want to be able to support those teachers in between sessions, but to make sure that this work doesn't go by the wayside, that we want to make sure that it becomes part of our culture, that teachers embrace this model, this cultural shift, if you will, they understand it, and we can model it ourselves when we go to classrooms and have conversations about what's working and what's not. So that's why I felt it was important for us to do this additional training alongside of our teachers. So we had our second session. We also, the way that we kind of follow the sounds of cattle too, there are homics silent, so we have to submit to more as a group every month. Our next session is in a few weeks, early November. So I'll give you updates as the year unfolds, but so far it's been beneficial with kind of resetting our ideas around what we can do to support teachers for this work. And then last but not least, and I know that Mr. Murphy's going to probably mention this as well, I did add a picture. We had our first official CAT Lab Creative Action Thinking Laboratory exercise or session or classroom, if you will, this past week. And we had Miss Puzzle's kindergarten classroom, where we had two musicians come in and kind of get to know the students. This was the, again, the very first session that we had with our CAT Lab professionals. And we loved it, it was great to watch, kids had a great time. We're really excited to kind of build this kindergarten classroom, but also I think we're going to grade two very soon and then eventually start to work our way up to middle school and then high school. And we'll start to show some, kind of, some data to support what we're trying to do here, what's working and some of the lows and grows, if you will, around CAT Lab. But that picture I had was the first picture, the first session. I think they were in there for about thirty-five, forty minutes, kids had a fantastic time. So we're very excited to have this program started.
Is that update? Any questions? Administrators reports? This is DiOrio, this absent today.
Sounds like an interesting question, I will.
It's it.
And it was something he wants to present to us. Remember reading that, find it.
I did attend the forensics class.
Did you?
Yeah, it was pretty cool.
Did you solve it?
I haven't touched as to who the guilty party was, but I didn't share that.
You can share it now, it's been published, everybody knows. Share it now.
It looked to me like Mr. DiOrio was.
It was, but he's still walking on three man, so. It was him.
Oh, that's funny.
It was, they took their, their roles very seriously. So I know that Mr. DiOrio tried to go across the crime scene tape and he was not allowed to do that.
So now I know why this is not here, it's funny.
African.
Interfering with investigation.
All the land.
He did say the, they did a trip to Nichols College for Black and Red, The Dilemma of African-American Indigenous Identity Massachusetts. And he commended them on how respectful and well behaved they were on the trip. And he's hoping to have them give us a brief presentation about the event at November's meeting. So that's good, so they'll listen to us talk.
Just want to add to, the last part is report, Mr. Ken and Mr. Reardon, our two phys ed teachers. We're both retrained as part of, one of our grants last year. We had the ropes course updated and we had additional staff members trained to facilitate ropes course. So we've had several classes out there now this fall. The weather's been great too, but both middle school and high school students up on the high ropes course elements. So they're learning how to lay, how to use kind of the safety calls, if you will. But it's a challenge by choice, so you're not making everybody do it. But we've got a lot of students, especially some of our young ladies, who have really taken the challenge. So it's pretty cool to watch, cool to watch.
Hangout spot.
What's that?
New hangout spot.
The picture day is on October twenty-fifth. And there's a Halloween dance also that day.
Yes.
Which I think Dante mentioned too, right?
Yeah, I think you did Dante, right?
Yes.
He did mention the pictures though, so. October twenty-fifth is picture day, at least anyone's listening at home who didn't know that already.
So where are your costume?
Honestly, why not?
They, we'll make it an interesting Christmas card, Christmas card edition.
All right, are we, the school improvement plan, can we talk about those separately or?
So that, now those are, that was something that Mr. DiOrio and Mr. Murphy will share his, it's his turn. But I can go over that or you can table that at the next meeting. It's just, it's really, if you, if you look at the overall plan and what we did was we broke it down into boxes on the top of each category, if you will. Those are overarching objectives from our strategic plan. So they kind of trickle down to our school plan, which then are aligned with each of the principals' building goals. So you had curriculum instruction enhancement. So both principals came up with two or three initiative strategies to enhance that. We also meet the needs of all students, so to provide a supportive and inclusive learning environment that addresses the individual needs of all students. And third was fostering a culture of belonging, which is cultivating a diverse, inclusive and welcoming school culture where all stakeholders feel valued and connected. So three strategies from each of those overarching goals with action steps, evidence, and then kind of timeline for this school year and what we're going to be concluding. Who's going to be doing the work on each one of those action steps, if you will.
Mr. Murphy?
Sure. So we just finished our math testing for PLA in math in all grades at the elementary school. So it was ninety percent done during this report, I was right here, but now we're pretty much complete, which is fantastic. So maps is a benchmark test that's done all over the world. I put in my report again, fifty thousand schools, sixteen million students take it each year. The first test is in the fall is the baseline, and then there's another test in the winter, and the last one in the spring, and that way you can check student growth throughout the year. So it's outside of grades, outside of what's happening in the classroom, it's just a spring test. Obviously, MCAS, you don't get results until the next year. This gives our teachers information right away that they can utilize to make informed decisions in the classroom. So it's a great thing and we're finished up with that. PBIS, so we started our incentive program. Students have turned in well over a thousand tickets. They've gotten a multitude of prizes. This is our new school store, so we found, displayed it must have near the gym. So maybe it was an old school store or when, you know, there was happenings in the gym. Maybe it was a ticket booth, I don't know, but there's that great window right there that our teachers have decorated. So once every other week, each class can go and trade in their tickets. They've got everything from little glow sticks to pencils. And then we've done experiential incentives, so principals for the day, ride to school in a police car. I wheeled the student specials, we're playing music the other day. Just again, celebrating the hard work that our students do every day following our behavioral expectations. So it's been a great start to the year. The police department has been fantastic. We actually have two more scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday this week. I have seven principals of the day scheduled, so we watched the high school do the delay course. We walked over here, we took a tour of the high school, was myself a second grader and a fourth grader. We watched some, the gym class, and then we got some hot cocoa here, and then we headed back to our school. I tried to take the kids sporadically through the day, to be with me all day. It's not helpful for them to be in the classroom, but just to have that experience and time with them was, it's a great experience. So there's more of those to come. I think I have about eighteen scheduled, so it was a popular prize. I even have kids signing my car for third ticket. So they take chalk markers, like used cars, and they sign their name on their car. So when you see the two thousand ten Camry with paper writing up there, those are students' names. So again, just anything that we can do to have our kids feel happy and part of our school, it's fantastic. So CAT Lab, I know Mr. McCormick already mentioned it, they were in Miss Puzzle's room. And again, it's, they were singing songs, doing things, but they're really tying it to the lesson and the lesson plan. It's all about that engagement and creative action thinking. So they did a fantastic job. I can't wait to see that program take off and to see everything going on in the classroom. So we've already met with our second grade about really attacking math fluency and how can you get creative and help the teachers through music, through song, through dance, through art, attack some things that our kids are struggling with, with engagement in the classroom through CAT Lab. So very excited about this program. And I have PTO. My first PTO event was, meeting was virtual, so I was lucky enough, the last one, to be there in person. Over twelve adults that just really care about our students and our community. And to hear about all the hard work that they put in and all the planning that goes into stuff for our students. The food drive going on right now, Spirit Week, Veterans Day breakfast. There's, there's a multitude of things going on in our school that the PTO really works hard on. And we're very lucky to have those parents working hard for our school. And we even had a woman who works with the library come and share about the things that are happening at the local library and how can we get more of our students involved in the library. So just a great meeting and looking forward. The last collection day for the food drive is Wednesday. The wedding class gets a little party in their classroom and we have enough pancakes and syrup and we actually got candy donated and that candy goes to the senior center for trick or treat. So just fantastic to see the community come together and the smile on the kids' faces when they bring something in to donate, it was really great. So that is my report. We also have my school improvement plan. So like Mr. McCormick said, I don't know if you guys can read it on the side, but let me, I can turn it on. So for our first goal or objective, the improved academic performance of all students. For us, we really want to focus on integrating and enhancing those UDL strategies. I'm not going to walk through each action step, but if you guys look them over if you have any questions. So obviously, the coaching sessions that we do, followed by our leadership team meetings to go over those sessions to see, to just have that talk about how we're going to implement those in each school. Go down a little bit further. The three professional development days, so we've already have those scheduled. If you look all the way to the right, so December thirteenth, January twenty-first and March eleventh, those are the days that Novak is coming in for our teachers and to give the presentation then. We're working on our own presentation now to kind of have a little kickoff before Novak comes, just to allow teachers to soak in UDL a little bit more and then Novak will come in and give the presentations. So very excited about UDL in the classroom. Next one I have on here is effectively implement the inter-reading program. I was on the phone with HMH today, talking about our student rostering and access to the assessments on HMH. We have teachers that are in a coachly session, which is pretty much one-to-one coaching that's going on there. So the first part of the plan is to facilitate the professional development for teachers on inter-reading and also Project Lead the Way, which is our science program for grades three and five. So really focusing on the new curriculum that's going in the building. So conducting regular check-ins with teachers, collecting and analyzing student data, all of the fun stuff of being a principal and really looking at all the things that are happening in the classroom and the curriculum we're giving to our students. One point three is curriculum alignment, so looking at to monitor the district curriculum alignment, seventy-five percent completion. So this started last year and now we continue it this year and just where it's mapping out what we're teaching, when we're teaching it to students. And this is very helpful for us because obviously with our new programs, inter-reading, bridges in math and PLTW aligns well. So now it's about having the teachers mapping out that part of it. So how long does it take to go through each section of inter-reading? Looking at comparing it to our MCAS and the standards in Massachusetts, because inter-reading is a national program. So what are heavy-hitting standards that we need to spend a little bit more time on? So walking through that curriculum alignment. And then continue to develop and integrate the ILT, instructional leadership team at the elementary school. So we put together the teams. Right now, we're working on developing the team's norms and meeting protocol. We're starting meetings in the week after the next, I believe, and just really, eleven twenty-two, it's on here. So we have that coming up. Today at PDF the school, each ILT team, we have ELA for K through two, ELA for three through five, and the same for math. That's what we're focusing on now for ILT, because we're looking at those inter-reading, bridges and PLTW implementation. So it gives me the chance to sit down with the teachers during the school day in those small chunks and small cohorts, to really focus on what's working, what's not. And so that way I can communicate that to HMH and also the coachly coaches. So we can continue that correspondence with HMH and make sure we're optimizing what we're doing in the classroom. All right, next up, improve social, emotional and mental health support. All right, next up, improve social, emotional, and mental health support for all students. Through the enhancement of the SST plan, we are seeing positive results of attendance behavior and SEL reports. So really developing our SST team. The high school has one, we have one. We're looking at how we're facilitating it, we're looking at developing the recommendation form, and reviewing the cycle of process through the teacher survey. So really seeing how it works on the other end. So if a student is struggling with attendance, behavior, academics, they use the recommendation form. That triggers a meeting of the SST team, which includes myself, the adjustment counselor, BCPA, the teachers themselves, the nurse. We all come together and formulate a plan for the student based on the data that's given at the meeting, and then that plan is tracked, usually in a six-week cycle. So there's a lot that goes into that process, the communication between families, teachers, obviously the team itself, so really tightening up that process and making sure we're putting forth a great product for our students. So that is that strategy. Just keep the whole page right. Next up, we already talked about CatLab. So CatLab is obviously something that we're looking at to improve the social, emotional, mental health support for our students in the classroom, talking about engagement mainly. So CatLab is under that goal. It's two point two. And then goal three is improve climate and culture at NDES. I've talked a little bit about our PBIS programming. Some people can think, well, see on the upside, all the kids coming to school in the police cars, and me bringing them in the chairs to our specials, and see my car, and hot pink writing going down the road, but that stuff's just secondary, it's really about the behavioral expectations of the school. So what we did was, we reviewed the current ones that we had, we updated all of our visuals, which we saw when we did the walk around school in the beginning of the year. We have a PBIS team that meets every other Tuesday, developing incentives and process. Again, incentives need to be something kids want, so we've already had some that we've seen might not work, it might not be a high lever incentive. So always constantly going back and listening to teachers and student voice on what they like, and that way we can get the best results that we want through our behavior. All right, and develop school council. I put it in my last smores, reaching out to family members who want to be a part of school council. So we should be having our first school council meeting. Over to the right, down low, on, I believe it's eleven eighteen. So looking at school council law in Massachusetts, looking at the focus agenda that a school council should have. So usually they focus on budget, they focus on demographics, there's four main areas that I put in my smore to go over. So already have two members, but looking at a couple more spots on there. So we'll have four meetings over the course of the year, and from those meetings, they will just advise me on maybe some thoughts moving forward in those four major categories. And that is my school improvement plan.
Lights on or off when they ride the police car here?
So when they come down the parent line, they put them on, which is very exciting. I think it's just when they stay on, I don't think they're flashing, but a couple of the parents are going to have to get used to looking over and seeing the crews that are coming by with the lights on. But as you can see, we create a full, a little certificate for the child when they get out of the road, the police. I sent that to the parent, and the parent was so excited. The two that are scheduled this week already, the parents have reached out and talking about their kid, won't stop talking about it, so excited. So the police officer shows up, does it seven forty-five, and then shows, comes right down the line, gets out, I wait outside for them, give them the certificate, take the picture. It's just a great thing for the kids to do. And when I talked with Sergeant Churchley of the police department, he was ecstatic about this program, and really says that's part of what the job being a police officer is, is that community outreach, and they're very excited about it.
You can speak to the sirens?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I hope, yeah. From the back yelling up, can you do the sirens?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Student services update, is that right?
I don't know, I think I want to go first next, like disco balls, one time, and then police cars the second time, so. So my updates are ready for October. The first is just since the start of school, but especially during the month of October, we've worked really hard, both myself along with my administrative assistant, in terms of working with the special education and related service providers, to really discuss the updates to department procedures and practices, which seems kind of mundane, especially considering all the exciting things that they've heard, but it's really critically important in terms of really bringing the department together to improve operational efficiencies and communication, which was critical with, you know, the changes, and I think it's been well received, as well as we've spent time really preparing for our upcoming IDP training, which I'll talk about in just a few minutes. Our IDA grant for FY twenty-five was completed and submitted, and as you know, we've been working hard, getting ready for our training for our new IDP system at PLAN. We finally, with all the work that was put in, getting ready for that training has, the first phase has started, and was completed at the administrative level with the focus on the operational side of the system. That included myself and Miss Brennovich in terms of the administrative side. Training for the five oh four module was completed on October sixteenth, and our initial training for special education teachers and related service providers is actually scheduled for the week, this week of October twenty-first with the EDPLAN training team. Actually, special ed teachers were trained, in fact, today, all day, which was, I think, quite successful. And then related service providers are actually, their training is occurring on Wednesday. So we're excited for finding for that training to be occurring, since there was a lot of work that was done to get that all set up with the platform and the training modules to be ready for that. So we're happy that we're finally in that training phase. And then, as I mentioned in last month's update regarding Indicator fourteen, which was that transition survey outcomes, which was really important, to really look at how our students with disabilities who graduated in school year twenty-two, twenty-three, where they were in terms of their outcome once they graduated and left our school. We were very pleased that our survey completion rate was a hundred percent, and that really was the result of the combined efforts of our high school special education teachers, Miss Luckier and Miss Davenport, together with Mrs. Brennovich and myself, really tag teaming and collaborating to make sure that we had one hundred percent success rate with that, which we're very proud of, because that really gives us good information as a district in terms of our students' transition outcomes. So very happy with that outcome. And that's my report. These disco balls, but I think good work so far.
I thought they'd come up with something like, kind of party or something.
Something, no, I'll get that ready for November. This is, thank you.
Thank you.
Technology update from Mr. Hackenson. Software updates. Parents support submitted for high school middle school students on the apartment. Home report tries to go up to the whole district on number eight, and they've got a redesign and a fresh look. The EDPLAN portal has been created, staff has been imported, students on five oh four, ID has been imported. Some work left to be done there, and updates on the district webpage. I'm sure all that will be handed over to capable hands. Thank you, Mr. Hackenson.
Mr. Hackenson updated all these things, the webpage, and the interactive software between school and parents, and I was just riding off into the sunset. Always going east, so it's sunrise.
Next month I'll have a report from the committee. I gave a pass, it's only there for a couple weeks, but next month I'll have it.
Very old business. You have the regionalization update?
All right, so we have an update. We met, and the regionalization committee voted to approve this agreement as it stands to the towns. Now it's in our hands as a committee. Now, this happened a little over a week ago, so I figured that tonight I would talk a little bit about it, tell you what we got in this thing. Now, I promised at the last meeting that we had, which was the joint select board, to read the whole thing, but since you guys seem super-
If anyone requested, no, Tim, you said.
Yes, if anyone requested. Right now, nobody's requesting me to read the whole thing. In fact, I think you guys are actively a little concerned about me doing so, but I could go through and give the highlights. Mr. McCormick saw to it that it was put up on the school webpage, so it's there if anyone wants to go read the whole thing. It's a lot of fun legally, but to be honest, it's not like a terribly long document.
Or overly complicated.
It's not overly complicated. Most of it's pretty standard stuff, a lot of it's clarifying how we interact. A lot of the discussion, from my understanding, was really how the regional district school committee is set up, and then what schools go where, so that's kind of what's included in here. So for starters, the section one is in regard to the committee itself. Nine-member committee, which would be three members from each town, so we have equal representation, which was one of the reasons that Quabog was the original direction we went in. I know that was a big part of it, was how we, all the towns are equally represented on the school committee. So there'll be nine members, three from each town. Because it's a regional school, the members would be elected on two-year terms, and it's on a biannual election cycle based on the state elections. So it's tied to that process. If a vacancy occurs, the select board chooses a replacement for that person who has left the committee within thirty days. Organization is kind of the same way we do it here, you have to choose a chairperson, a vice chairperson shortly after, you know, the first regular meeting after the elections, that would happen. Powers and duties, similar to other, you know, it's guided by chapter seventy-one of the general laws, which if you really want to read into that, you can do that, it's not posted, is that posted on our school webpage? Posted on Massachusetts State page, go look up Bill Galvin's page, he'll tell you what all the laws are about that. Same thing with quorum rules. Now, this is where, this is one thing that they spend a good amount of time working out, and that is the transition committee. Now, the one that goes up, are the dates changed on the electronic one that went up?
No, I mean, as my-
So as a qualifier, the dates, at our last meeting before we approved this, we realized the timeframe wasn't going to work. So the one that'll be on the website will say, on January first, twenty twenty-five, that's not going to happen, because that's in like two months. So that's not, we moved it one year. So when you read through this, because I know you want to go read all this, when you read through it, just add one to all the years. So on January first, twenty twenty-five becomes January first, twenty twenty-six. And every time you see January first, twenty twenty-five, just in your head do the same thing. So the elected members of the North Brookfield School Committee, which is five plus, and one North Brookfield Select Board member, who will be selected by the select board, and the elected Quabog Regional School Committee, which is twelve people, this is a big transition committee. So there's eighteen members will serve until we have an established school committee, and then the biannual elections will kick in. So that's another part of what we were looking at here. So the transition period will be in place from January first, twenty twenty-six, not twenty twenty-five, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. So assuming, and next month, we would have to vote on this to push it to the town, and then it has to go to the town for a vote. There's probably going to be considerable discussion prior to that as well, but as long as we get all of our stuff submitted in, the earliest we would become a part of the Quabog District would be July first, twenty twenty-seven. So up until then, North Brookfield will continue to function as its own school, while the transition committee figures out the nuts and bolts of combining the two schools.
So interesting that they go from a school committee of twelve for the two towns, that they go down to nine for the three towns.
Yeah, so they've had trouble filling the twelve seats.
Oh, that's a lot of seats.
Because it's six per town, so everyone, so as it is, they still have some vacancies and things on their, on their committee. It's just, it's hard to get people to run for stuff. I think all of us can attest to that in this town. It's hard to get people to run, so it's, they're making the size of the district, of the school committee more manageable while also giving each town the same representation. So proportionally, nothing really changing, it just makes it easier to do. So yeah, twenty twenty-seven, June thirtieth, the last day of, would be the last day of North Brookfield and Quabog functioning independently. Each member of the transition committee will have one vote, which will not be weighted, so I guess it's possible they could tie on stuff. We'll see across that bridge when we get there. Any vacancies and or expired terms that occurred in the transition period will be filled by the remaining transition committee members. So the transition committee would appoint someone to take over for the person's spot if they were to leave the committee. So powers, powers of the transition committee, they're receiving funds and grants that'll help get things going in the schools. It says, other funds will continue to flow to the member towns and their individual school departments, but I'm assuming there's going to be some legal costs and things like that. We've already had a grant just to do this process, so the transition committee will handle that sort of stuff. Power to establish and policies for the district. So this is really just an outline of how we get this transition committee in the district started, and then the transition committee will be responsible for fine tuning, because obviously this fourteen-page document can't capture everything that comes up. Power to employ superintendent, treasurer, business manager, director of people's student services, so they're, they're, they're in the process of hiring, you know, they're involved in the process of hiring that. Power to contract for and purchase good and services, the dot budgets, negotiate and enter into collective bargaining, all the kind of stuff that a school committee can do, that transition committee will be doing on behalf of the future region, if that was the way we go. So district schools shall comprise of all grades, pre-kindergarten through twelve. And what they're going to be doing, so the location and leasing of the school facilities. So the way, the way the district will be set up, the district grades nine through twelve high schools shall be located within the radius of four miles from the point at which Route sixty-seven intersects the boundary line of the towns of, it's where Quabog is. So grades nine through twelve goes to the current Quabog High School. And then grades K through eight middle school will be located in North Brookfield, probably in this building.
Six three.
Six three. So this is the middle school that we're in now, in this district. The three-grade K through five elementary schools should be located in their respective towns, and then the committee will decide the location of the preschool programs. Any new school facility constructed for the purposes of accommodating pupils in grades K through five, primarily from a particular member town, shall be located in such town. Any new facility constructed for the purposes of accommodating pupils in one or more grades from both member towns shall be located within geographical limits of the district. I don't think we're building any new schools, not as part of this plan right now, but that's just clarifying that. Then it gets into a fun whole section about leasing, and how the towns, the district kind of leases the buildings from the town. It's really hard to summarize this very quickly, but again, it's posted on the website. If you're super interested in leasing law, that's in there. An important thing, unpaid balance on any outstanding bonds or notes, I think we talked about this in the meeting last week. School bonds and notes authorized for the purpose of constructing or improving the above-mentioned facilities. At the time of leasing of said building and facility, shall obey the obligation of a member town wherein the building is located. So if this town put a new roof on this school tomorrow, we own that roof and we're responsible for it. The district's not going to take it over. Once the district takes over this school, if the district decides the school needs a new roof, now the district as a whole is responsible for that roof. So it's the stuff the towns do before the official start of this as a district, remains that town's monetary obligation. Portionment payment of costs incurred by the district. So it goes into how capital costs are allocated out. Capital costs for each fiscal year shall be apportioned with respect to each district school. Each member town, based upon the percentage of that town's student enrollment in the school as of October first of the fiscal year, next preceding the fiscal year for which the portionment is determined. That's funny. So you guys can read into this any more. "In the event that the cost of any single repair or maintenance project be undertaken in any fiscal year at any of the schools in the district is estimated to be in the budget in excess of five thousand dollars with useful life of twelve months or more, the cost of such projects we treat as a capital cost to be paid by the district and assessed to the town." Kind of the same way we do things now, it's just three towns are involved in this. Operating costs describes how each member's share of that, each member's share of that portion of the district's operating costs that exceed the total required local contribution for all members shall be assessed by computing the ratio with which some of the in-district pupil involvement of a member town. As, it just keeps going on like that. So that is operating costs, transportation, not including capital costs or debt, but includes interest and principal and revenue anticipation. So that's handled a little bit differently. Trying to go fast as I can, I'm on page eight, we're getting there. Fiscal year and times of payment of apportioned costs. It outlines the payment schedules that each town is required to distribute its proportionate share. August first, October first, December first, February first, April first, and June first. And then budget and incurred of debt. So it goes into how the budgeting occurs. "So the committee shall by a two-thirds vote of the full committee in each year adopt an annual maintenance and operating budget for the ensuing fiscal year, not later than forty-five days prior to the earliest date on which the business section of the annual town meeting of any member town is to be held, but no event later than March thirty-first." So, and I think that the same rules apply to the tentative maintenance and operating budget. And it's the committee. Yeah, it details out how, so the district decides on it, the school committee votes two-thirds of a vote and it has to be forty-five days before the town meetings of the member towns. That's what they're saying there. School transportation is provided by the district and if there's any additional costs that go with that, it'll be divvied down amongst the towns. Then it goes into how you go about amending this agreement. Maybe amended in time, time to time in a manner here and after, provided. Outlines the procedure of that. So there's a proposal procedure and petitioning process signed by at least a hundred registered voters. That's one of the options for amending the agreement. That's an example. "Select board of each member town shall include in the warrant for the next annual or special town meeting called for the purpose of such article stating the proposal." So the amendment would have to be approved by all the member towns by a majority vote at a town meeting in order to amend this agreement. We have to approve it at a town meeting and then if we amend it, that has to be approved by all three towns at a town meeting. And then admission of additional towns to the district. As you know, based on the fact that we're going through this process, there is a procedure for getting additional towns into the district. And it outlines that. Right now, I don't hear any talk about that, so I'll skip this for now, but it does outline how that is. It does, however, also mention in this section, "Those employees who retire from the North Brookfield Public Schools prior to July first, twenty-twenty-seven, the employer shares the applicable retiree health insurance premiums and pension will be paid for by the town of North Brookfield." So if you, if a teacher retires prior to July first, twenty-twenty-seven, North Brookfield owns the retiree for that. Any teachers that retire from the district after that, that is a district retirement and the district will be responsible for retiree health insurance premium, et cetera. Then outlines a procedure for withdrawal of a member town. I'm going to just kind of skip through that, but it does outline it step by step. It also talks about how you end the terms and then how any capital costs are apportioned out after that, you know, as part of that withdrawal from the district. "Pupils' rights to attend district schools. District schools shall accept all children in grades pre-kindergarten through twelve who meet the age requirements to reside in the district. In regard to pre-kindergarten, the district may impose limits on the number of general education students it admits." So there's that. And then, "Committee may provide for other appropriate arrangements in the case of children with special needs after consulting with the parent or guardian of the children involved in the IEP process." That's, that's kind of summarizes what that is all about. Obviously, you know, if you have any questions to that, it's in here, but these are all fairly vague. So there'll be, it's kind of operating the same way it's always operated as far as admitting students in the town. And then I believe there's also a school choice option as well, since kids are already choicing into that district. Vocations and trade school pupils. There are options for trade schools as a part of that district. And then admission of pupils residing, oh, there we go, outside of the district, there is an option for that as well. And then it goes into rights of employees. It talks about how the contracts, we talked earlier about how we're doing contracts. So this is kind of discussing how the contracts will be handled as they, as they merge together. And then, "The amended agreement will take place, as I said, January first, twenty-twenty-six, following the affirmative vote of each member town of Warren, North Brookfield, and West Brookfield at the town meetings held in each town, as well as approval by the commissioner of elementary and secondary education." They've been involved in this process the whole time. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has reviewed the language in this and really guided us along this whole process. "Committee shall assume full jurisdiction over all pupils in the district on July first, twenty-twenty-seven, provided all requisite approvals are replaced by the preceding December thirty-first." This is why we're moving it all one year. So we need to have everything approved by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six so that we could start in twenty-twenty-seven. So that gives us time to work through all this stuff, get everything set and go from there. Because it's almost twenty-twenty-five already. And then, yeah, "The transition committee and the current committees of North Brookfield and Quabog Regional School District shall maintain jurisdiction through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven." Again, it's online. I think I lost everybody reading that, but that's fine. So if you go online on the school page, it's up there and you can read through the whole thing. I tried my best to summarize, but it's hard to summarize legal documents.
A for a.
All right.
You've done good. Very well done. Thank you.
It's just funny that the long sentence is nothing, 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 and then bam, forget this.
So apparently it was in, because they had redrafted, this was, there was a previous draft that was all marked up and stuff and then got marked up again. And they sent it to Desi and then they kicked it back and the lawyers looked at it again, made all the changes and then sent it in again and then I think Desi just sat on it for a while and then sat on it. So, yeah, so that's where we are. Now we've got it and it's really, because I, you know, I joined the committee. I went in there and I said, "We got to get this done today." It was not that way. I wish it was though, like you'd be like, what did? No, they, the people that were involved, I know Ron has left the committee, but Ron, you know, how long have we been having this conversation, three years?
Yeah. Before I did.
It was a lot, it's been a lot of time that we've been, that they've been working through this stuff. So I remember some of the earlier meetings where we were just going through behind the line reading. We'd get through like a page, a meeting and it was. Yeah, it was tedious, but it was important so that everyone agreed on the language. It actually made approving it fairly easy because, you know, everyone's already played a role in getting it to where it was. So that's where we are. So next month, we'll put it on as a voting, like you guys can read through it and if you have questions. I know Michelle Petritas has offered to come in, she was on the committee as well. And I could probably get Sheila in here as well and we could talk about it a little bit more or maybe set something up ahead of time.
If we could.
Yeah.
Because I want to understand the dollars around, you know, comparison of what the budget is and for the schools today versus what the budget would be for the schools out there.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a few years since they really ran the numbers up. They, early on, they did a really detailed breakout of the costs versus the district versus individual, you know, even like what Quabog was projecting versus what North Brookfield was projecting. But since then, we had that big bump in the, in the outsourced special ed, you know, the fourteen percent increases and that sort of stuff. And so there's some, some numbers that went wonky the last couple of years. But I know there does exist a very detailed document of those numbers based on their projections then. I'll talk to Sheila and Michelle and see if we can get them in here or get some information ahead of time, which would be helpful. So it makes it easier conversation.
I think it would be.
Yeah.
For an easier conversation because, you know, the agreement is very legal ease. Okay, so we all understand, you know, that this is how, in terms of, you know, how this would work.
Well, we have.
Understood, but now it's like, okay, so.
And we have to explain it to the town because in the end, we can vote whatever we want. The town has to vote on it to approve it.
Yeah, I think the financial aspect is going to be the biggest concern.
Yeah.
Of the public. That's, that's been the, from what I've heard, is because the school is the largest portion of the town budget. And joining a district, there's a certain autonomy per town that is sacrificed to the, the district being joined together with other towns. So this, there has to be a.
So it comes down to a cost benefit analysis.
Right.
Pretty much. So I think that'll be helpful to them.
Yep.
And with budgets being tied, if they are being able to show a, the benefit will definitely help. You know, the ability of having a larger district, the ability to negotiate personal contracts of transportation, things like that. I think there'll be a, you know, see how that would play out. There's opportunities.
I did have a question about should this agreement go through and the towns all decide to move forward with this? So our ninth and twelve grades will be going to Quabog High School. What would happen to a portion of the building right now that those students working today? What would happen with that?
Oh, this whole thing would become a middle school.
For all three.
This entire building would be grade six through eight.
For all, all of your students.
All, all their kids would come here.
All right. Okay. I didn't understand that from that, thank you.
Yep.
So that's it, that's my full business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As policy updates, we kind of touched on that already, but is there anything we should add on that? Or might you rehash?
I don't, I don't really think so. I think that the next step is, is meet again with some more, some, some of the answers that you requested and then the hope is to have those policies that Floyd had for the next general meeting in November.
All right, new business?
So I added this, Mr. Murphy and I were approached by Jamie Gilman, who is a member, community member from North Brookfield who also is on the Parks and Rec Committee. And he's done a lot of work with Parks and Rec Committee on improving the playground downtown. He approached us to discuss some swing upgrades, the elementary school playground. We have since purchased a soccer swing. I don't know if you have young kids who have access to the playground, but we have a soccer swing which is used every day, every day.
Very popular.
Very popular. But he is looking to donate some time and resources to some new swings and some new hardware to the school district. So I need everyone to be able to accept that donation.
I'll move to approve that.
Second. Any discussion or comments?
Thank you, Jamie, for that donation. I think we've been talking about that for a little while, so.
Yeah, no, we're super psyched and I know that we'll provide updates and pictures as soon as we have all the comments.
Thank you, Jamie.
All in favor of accepting the donation?
Aye.
Absolutely? You know, it'd be fantastic, once the most swings don't go sad. Executive session, if you have any, or?
Do you want to just briefly discuss the letter from Mr. Redjust, a timeline for us? If you're going to respond and the next steps?
All right. Let's see.
I'll move, I'll move that we adjourn to executive session and only come back to adjourn the meeting as a whole.
Second. That's it. All in favor?
Welcome vote.
John Gary, aye.
Tony Matthews, aye.
Me too, all aye.
Tim Canada, aye. Oh.
Oh.
Caitlin here, yes.
Yes.
Sorry, we'll, we'll, I'm going to friendly amend my own motion that we allow Caitlin to come back in to record the minutes for the executive session. Tim Canada, aye.
John Gary, aye.
Tony Matthews, aye.
Thank you, everyone, coming? Fantastic evening.